Father, meeting the order, please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll have roll call, please.
Councilmember Wallers?
Yes.
Salvi?
Yes.
Ellison?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Yes. Citizens comments, we have a couple. Reggie, do you want to do yours first?
Sure, absolutely can. Councilmember City Manager, I want to present Corporal Shane Nelson with uniform him as a bonus Class A uniform. It is a result to his fifteen years of service for the Morris Police Department. Currently Corporal Nelson is assigned to as our general investigator. He will defend any crimes or any investigation where it involves extensive interviews or any other follow-up. So that's what I would like to do tonight. Can you run your follow-up? This is a bonus Class A uniform, like I said, which normally is with ties and everything like that.
Thanks Shane.
Thanks Shane.
Thanks.
Busy man. Okay, we have, is there any other citizen comments before we get into insurance? Okay, let's skip, I mean, let's go to insurance. And, I don't know, Blade, do you have anything to open up with, or?
I don't know.
Okay, great.
Do I have hard copies, do you guys need one?
We have, we have a one-page or two-page deal. That's it? Okay. I don't think, unless somebody wants one.
No, I don't think they checked out about the meat.
Yeah.
They've got it on there.
She's there, but Jeff's got it.
Okay, great.
But, thank you guys very much for.
You can, you can stand up and approach the mic, please.
Yes. I am, I don't think I was able to make it last year, but Joel Quam, Bremer Insurance. Thank you very much, councilmembers, for including us in tonight's meeting. It's similar to last year's previous formats, we like to, this is what we call our executive summary. So it really takes, what was last year, what was this year? What are some of the high-level discussion points? And if it changed, why did it change? And then open it up for discussion. So the first paragraph you see there, you have been for a number of years and continue to be insured by the League of Minnesota Cities Insurance Trust. And they are by far the number-one writer of cities in Minnesota. Vast majority of cities are with the League, and for good reason. They have a very strong program, insurance written for cities, and they also have a dividend program. And there hasn't been many years that there hasn't been a dividend. So that's always a benefit as well, and a reflection of good actuaries and loss control to see a dividend. So the high level, you'll see, last year or this year, it did get up. Why is that? There's two driving factors. One of those, and we'll go line by line, but you will see in the property line from seventy-three to eighty-seven. This includes assuming that the new treatment facility has been finished. And that sixty million dollars, that adds to property value. That's really the driving of why you see that they change. And another FYI that you will see, every seven years, the League sends out an in-person appraisal. So they'll look at every building in the city. And they'll say, based on appraisals, the cost of construction, do we have enough money, based on our building limits, to replace it if the building burns down, closes down, catastrophic event? If it doesn't, they made adjustments. But that was completed this last year, you have a full appraisal write-up of every building in the city. So that is, when you see the property changes, and there's a highlight paragraph on the bottom there. Went from thirty-one to forty-three blanket limits. That's the driving reason, again, pretty much that water treatment facility plant. Following down from the, from the top line, equipment breakdown, that follows your underlying property limits. So an adjustment there, you have more properties, so that premium is adjusted respectively. The liability, your municipal and airport liability, that did go up a little bit as well, and that's based, each year exposure changes. So that's based on your exposures. One of those liability lines expenditures, so expenditures were up over last year. And this year, from the League, police officer liability rates did increase ten percent. So that was across the boroughs and cities, that was a change there. Your liquor liability went down, as well as your fireworks liability. The crime bond, you will see, among other things, employee dishonesty, employee theft. Went from seven seventy-nine to twelve seventy-nine. Also reflected in that number is your cyber liability coverage. So I do quite a bit of cyber liability across many organizations, cities included. And the League has a pretty strong cyber form built in. So it's, the specifics aren't highlighted here, but as a city and all League members, you have two million per occurrence with a three-million-dollar aggregate. So if you hear those major breaches that a city shut down, you have pretty sound coverage. If that happens, notify us, notify the League, and then it kind of goes into action mode, where you triage with forensics, they figure out what happened. By law, state, federal statute, you're required to send out notification, anyone potentially affected that there's going to have been a breach. So the League, and in addition to us, that's your insurance agency, can help manage that process. And really important, the other part of it is, as a city, as personally as everybody, to keep cyber aware. And that's just, look for fishy links and don't click on them, because they're not, they're not stopping. And hackers are continually trying to figure out a way to trick us. The automobile, that is a snapshot period of time, twenty-three to twenty-six, the number of vehicles. And obviously you had, last year at this time versus this year. Your excess liability, again, it's a reflection of your underlying policies. So that has a little bit of a change as well. The other big change that we'll see and we'll look at, the second page, is your work comp. And that was a noticeable change over last year. And you'll see it on the second page of why that is. So your work comp is based on two main factors, your payroll and then your experience mod. Experience modification factor, which is a formula that's determined by the state of Minnesota, and it's based on your actual claims. So the reason why it looks like there is so much of a change is last year, you had a point nine zero experience mod. So one is baseline, so everybody starts at one, that's no better or worse. Below one is better than average, above one is going away, or trending higher than average. So you move from a point nine to a one point oh six. One point oh six is by no means a bad mod, it just is, it's a change from last year. And so that's a three-year snapshot in time of your claims historically. And when you look at that and says, well, you know, can we do anything as far as premium savings, or do we have any options? So each year, the League does offer deductible options, and we analyze based on your claims, does it make sense to take a deductible option? And a quick little study based on last year. So last year, we chose no deductible, because it didn't make sense. You paid ninety-one thousand roughly in work comp premium. For a twenty-five-hundred-dollar deductible, the League would have given you a five-and-a-half percent credit, or that's roughly fifty-five-hundred dollars in premium savings. You look at that from actual claims, would it make sense? So last year, from July, the start of your policy period, last year until the end of March, when we analyzed it, you had eight claims filed and paid in reserve claims of sixteen thousand. So the premium savings wouldn't have justified using a deductible. The way that I like to think about it, it's about a two-claim wash. So if you have two claims, you pay twenty-five hundred deductible per time. Anything over two claims, it really stuck, doesn't make sense, because you're paying more deductible than you would have just having no deductible. So the same argument flows into this year. You look at the renewal premium, and then also the credit option is five percent. You would save sixty-one hundred dollars in premium. But again, based on typical year and looking at claims, you could only have one and two claims about to wash, so it hasn't made sense. Previous years, when your mod was substantially higher than it is, deductible did make sense. So each year, we look at it, we analyze claims, but it's just our recommendation to stay with no deductible, based on, based on that data. Scanning through the documents, no other changes. So really, the property and the work comp are the biggest differences. And that's all we had to review and open it up to any questions.
I have a question on the property. We added the new water treatment plant. Is there any benefit to taking off the old one, because that will be demolished soon, right?
Yeah, within two months.
Yep, that will be deleted and then reflected in.
Okay.
Yep.
So there's a certain value for that, that'll come down?
Yep, so it'll be more of a wash, add up to like specifically, what's that insured for? But yes, it will be taken off and reflected in your total limits.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you. Any other questions for Joel?
Yeah, if it wasn't for those two.
It'd have been a very out of bed for a year.
Right.
But on that side too, when you look at, okay, what can we do as a city for, because work comp, it's two-fold. There's proactive things you can do from the safety and loss control, which the League does a great job. You can also utilize Bremer. We have an internal loss control rep, he's been doing it for forty years, and it'd be a complement to the League, where you can analyze and look at safety policies, procedures, or some training issues, is there any further training you can do? But you always will get, kind of those claims, you don't expect, as far as work comp, somebody trips and they get really hurt. You know, you can't prevent all of those, but just safety top of mind. The League does, and Bremer does, have resources to utilize. But that's, yeah, that's just a part of work comp. It's the frustration of a lot of people, and it really comes down to state law, and they determine the formulas based on claims, and they're going to address it if we can, so.
Okay, any other questions for Joel? Thank you, Joel.
Thank you very much, guys, appreciate it.
You bet. Thank you, Tom. Now, we have the resolution act on that right now?
Yes.
I have maybe a question for you, before we do that. With regards to the increased insurance for the water treatment plant, is that something we incorporated into our water rates? Or do we factor that in at all?
Yeah, that's part of the additional costs of operations for the water plant.
I assume it's not, but I just.
Right. So in front of the pages from Bremer, is the resolution?
I'll move on to the resolution accepting insurance renewal proposal from Bremer.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? We'll have roll call on the resolution, please.
Councilmember Salvi?
Yes.
Wallers?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Ellison?
Yes.
Mayor Hughes?
Yes.
Did we need to clarify on a deductible or not there to waive?
I guess it was recommended that we go with no deductible, and it's priced as no deductible.
That's what we did before, so.
So I don't think we really had to make a choice, unless we wanted to go the other way.
Right.
Yeah, just to clarify.
Yeah, great, thank you. Any other citizen comments? And we have no public hearing tonight, we have reading and approval of minutes from May twenty-eighth.
I have a motion to approve the regular minutes from the May twenty-eighth meeting. I'll second it.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed, carried. And we have the condensed version of the minutes.
I'll move on to condensed version of the minutes.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed, carried. We have the consent agenda, consisting of the audit of city bills, pay estimate number twenty-one for Magna Construction for the water treatment facility, and the May transit report, and the gambling report from the Eagles, I believe it was, was it the Mavs? From the Eagles. And I will move approval of the items on the consent agenda.
I will second.
Any discussion on any of the items?
I guess just a general comment, seventy-nine thousand five hundred and thirty-six dollars for the month. Last billing cycle, it's probably one of the lowest ones we've had in a while.
Yeah, that's true.
Line item fifty-three, Stevens County, DAC purchase of the DAC transit bus for a thousand dollars.
Thank you.
We're getting a new bus, and we're trying to get two electric buses, I'm just curious why we're.
It's not a.
What's up?
Well, the primary, well, they wanted to give it a bus. And our oldest bus needed major air conditioning repair and a couple other small items. And so we could buy this, it only had forty-four thousand miles on it. And so, and the one that needs the repair is the one we plan to sell when we get a new one in the fall, which ironically, the resolution is unpretended. So, and then, we've never had a backup bus before, we've always had six buses and most, at most five are running at one time. But somebody's usually got an oil change or something needs to be fixed, you've got that extra bus. And this will give us a chance to then, probably next year, we'll decide, one of them will just be placed as a backup bus, so that we won't be doing as much maintenance on it, it'll just be available, we have a problem. But we thought for a thousand dollars, visited with Lane about it, that it's cheaper than repairing the other one.
Makes sense, I do have for the mileage.
So.
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
Good question. I had seen that also, and I was looking for which one it was, I didn't mark it. So that only has forty-four thousand miles on it?
Yep, forty-four, one, yeah, just over forty-four. Two thousand and eight, but it's in really good condition. Maybe we had, Brad drove it, Brad looked it over good, so, yeah.
Good.
Good. It's barely broken compared to ours.
Right.
Any other questions on the consent agenda? All in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed, carried. We have a park donation, park bench donation from the Lions Club. Are these the park benches that are going where?
Let me get down to it here.
Are they going to put one out at the new dog park?
I don't know if that's what this is for.
I think they, I think they were looking for some benches and stuff at the dog park. I know they talked about the public works putting some picnic tables in there. And I think they were, I guess I didn't talk to them when they.
I thought when we toured the parks, I thought they said something about by the splash park, that they wanted some benches there.
That's what it was, that's what it was, thank you.
It didn't order them.
Yep.
I bet you that's what it is.
No, I remember that.
Yeah.
I will make a motion to accept a donation from the Lions Club for park benches for the city park.
I'll second it.
Great, any, any other discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed, carried. We have a resolution authorizing purchase of a transit bus.
This is our new one that we.
So this is a new one?
Yeah.
I'll make, DAC didn't have any other buses?
They didn't.
Wait a minute, I like that one better, actually.
I'll move on to the resolution authorizing the purchase of a transit bus.
I'll second.
Any discussion? I think we all understand what this is all about, so. Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Miller?
Yes.
Ellison?
Yes.
Wallers?
Yes.
Salvi?
Yes.
Mayor Hughes?
Yes. And we have a resolution authorizing fund transfers.
These are all the budgeted transfers.
No surprises here, I will move the resolution authorizing the fund transfers.
I'll second.
Any discussion? We'll have a roll call vote on the resolution, please.
Councilmember Ellison?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Salvi?
Yes.
Wallers?
Yes.
Mayor Hughes?
Yes. City manager report.
Well, the big news is that we're making water. I don't know, I didn't, I didn't get any texts from Ryan that there's problems, so everything must be going good there. And, you know, one of the things that we did, we did give notice to the radio station and the newspaper that we were producing water and sending it out. And, you know, one of the things we talked about is waiting to make sure that the systems were working and everything. And then, at some point, we'll give a general announcement to the public, you know, that it's time to look at adjusting your water softeners. But I, and I haven't heard any issues yet with the new softened water going through the pipe systems. I don't know if anybody's noticed anything. I was gone today, I know Stacy mentioned, there was a couple people called and had some maybe concerns about the way the water tasted. I know when I first visited the plant, that was the day that you, was it the day you started? I specifically asked for a glass of water and tried it, and it tastes like water. And there's no taste to it. So, people will have their own peculiar tastes, you know, and we know that there's people that probably had hard water faucets in their houses and are used to drinking hard water. There's people that we know that don't have water softeners, that will now have softened water. And I think, I don't know, the last, the last time I talked to you, we're at seven grains of hardness in the water that was coming out.
Five to seven, yeah.
So, so it's right in there where it was supposed to be, five to seven grains of hardness. And, yeah, so if you didn't notice, it should be out in the system completely now, because it got sent up to the tower and into the water supply.
I checked yesterday at the plant, and it was fourteen at the plant, so it's still kind of blending. Fair enough, the shop there. Oh, the city shop.
So it's still, still a blended mix. And so then, once it gets completely to the point where it's, it was interesting, I was down in the Twin Cities last night, and White Bear Lake's the newest member of the Climate Smart Municipalities, and we're talking about different things. And I mentioned something about our new water treatment plant opened up. And she said, the administrator said, well, how hard's your water? And I said, it's forty-seven grains of hardness. She, she kind of did a double take, and she said, we soften our water, and it starts at eleven. And couldn't imagine how hard our water was to begin with. So in White Bear Lake, they have pretty soft water already. So I don't know if anybody has any questions about that. Or, you know, like I said, actually Stacy asked me about contacting Donna to do an e-alert, you know, to let everybody know, you know, that, you know, this is where we're at. And, you know, it's really going to be a point where we want to make sure all the water's in the system. You know, and then you'll get the full effect of, you know, what you're getting for the softened water coming out of the plant. And then, at that point, you know, we can, we can have people start adjusting their water softeners. Because you're not going to want to run, in my, in my opinion, you're not going to want to run your water softener normally if you're getting five grains of hardness or six grains of hardness.
I think Brian had a really great answer to, you know, what do I do with my, you know, what do I do when the water starts coming? What do I do with my softener? Brian said unplug it for a couple weeks, see if you like it.
See if you like it.
Just, you know, don't take it out, just unplug it or bypass it, bypass it. Thought that was a great answer.
But, you know, I, I made coffee this morning, didn't seem to have any problem with it before I left. And, you know, like I said, people will have different tastes, you know, and some people might not like it, you know, but.
Some people.
I couldn't taste it at all, I mean, it was just.
Some people didn't like the water before.
Well, yeah, so that was one of the comments from the university students, that they didn't necessarily like our water. You know, the way it tasted, and so they might have been drinking bottled water. We did notify the big institutions, you know, that this water would be coming. So the hospital, university, the nursing homes, the big institutions, school. So we'll see what happens.
I think that's great that you checked at the shop to see what, what it was like. So we know that it's still getting through, getting blended in and getting through the system. So when it gets down to where it should be, or where it's coming out of the, out of the plant, then, I think then we certainly need to tell everybody, for sure. Right. Do you go over and check over there?
I do periodically, I haven't been, I haven't checked since last one on, but I can definitely do that tomorrow.
Okay, yeah, that'd be, that's a good idea.
Medically, with the plant, with regards to landscaping and sections, responsibility is that?
The contractor, they've been working on that. When I came in today, we drove by the water plant, because I had to drop somebody off at the university. And you can see where they're landscaping now. We have that road, you know, one question I had for Ryan, because I wasn't quite sure on the plan. But, so the, the road that went around by the bike path before to the old plant, that'll be taken, that'll be gone. And then the new road will loop around back behind the new water plant. So they're actually, it'll be nice, because there'll be a little bit more space between the water plant and the bike path than what it was before. But, yeah, so that's what they're doing now, is they're doing kind of, kind of the finish work. And then, at some point, they'll be given the thumbs up to go ahead and start demolishing the old water plant. And then, it won't take, I think they have two months to do that from the time they start. So it's winding down.
And that's when we're going to change the water bills?
That's, yeah, so we talked about it. So, you know, the, the new water is going up now, so then we decided that we weren't going to raise the rates for June, but we'll probably raise the rates for July. Starting in July, then everybody should have the new water in the system. Actually, I had a phone message from the mayor, Alberta, has a question on the, I sent him a letter about the new rates and the contract, and how it works as far as being able to charge him for the operational costs, but not the capital costs of building the water plant. And, and I don't know that they realize, and they have a new mayor in Alberta now, I don't think they, he realized that we've been raising the rates as we went along, because we've been raising operational costs, a great part of the rate all along for the last five, six years. So I'll give them a call and let them know. And then, actually, you know, they can keep an eye on where they're at with water. They'll notice it right away too, in Alberta, once it comes in.
When are they ready for us to take a tour of the new facility?
Um, well, actually, the Germans are going to tour it tomorrow in the afternoon, so if anybody's ready. But it's up to you guys when you want to.
I guess if things are wrapped up after a meeting, if we hop on and run out, or. I guess it'd just be nice to go out and take a look, so we.
Yeah, we can do that.
See what's going on.
You'll be, Ryan gave me a tour with Morgan from the engineers, and it's impressive, it's really impressive. And actually, a load of waste lime went out already, at least one went, went out already. So, you know, that, it actually looks pretty good. It's almost like a chalk, a white chalk. And that system's working pretty good to, to compress the liquid out of that. And then it just drops into a big trailer, and a farmer comes, hooks it up, and takes it, takes it away. And then, I think we sent a sample of that in now, so that the state knows what the sample looks like. But, yeah, it's, it's impressive, it's a big facility compared to the old one. You almost have to walk into the old one first, and just look around, and then walk into the new one and see what that looks like now. Because it's completely different setup. And actually, the most impressive thing in there is there's a great big huge board, big screen TV, that shows all the operations that are going on in that plant. So Ryan can monitor that just by sitting there and looking and see what the pH of the, the water coming in and all the different processes, but he can do that on his phone. So maybe, maybe before, when we're done, if you want to just pull it up on your phone, Ryan, and show it to him. Because, because now he can, he can keep track of that and control things from his phone. So if there's an alarm that goes off, you know, he can take a look at it right on his iPhone.
We could do a few iPads through that.
Yep. So, so it's really. So, so it's really cool.
Hmm.
I'll just quickly touch on some of these things that are on here. Budget preparation, I'll have a budget guidance document for you at the next meeting. Actually, we just heard about insurance and so there's some insurance issues, you know, that we have to make sure is included in the budget. And we did, we did get about fifty-five thousand dollars more in local government aid going into next year. So that was nice. We got our LCCMR grant, so we'll be able to hire a project coordinator for the sustainability projects starting in July. The Germans are here. We had a conference yesterday and had a nice dinner information meeting last night. I actually presented the city strategic plan to probably about a hundred and twenty people and including some of the new state commissioners and people from the university, people from the energy environment, you know, different energy companies and stuff. So it was nice to see their reaction to what we're doing here in Morris. And obviously the Germans being here, it's, it's a lot of fun because they're getting a chance to see all the things that we're working on and they're working on some new things. We got a pre-con meeting on Monday, or on Thursday for the, this year's improvement project. So the biggest part of that is the state aid road work on East Seventh Street. District engineer was here for a site visit and next year they're going to be redoing Highway twenty-eight from Morris to Chicago. But then after that, there's no project around here for, until 2024. So it's going to be pretty quiet around here. Airport, we're trying to set up a meeting to talk about the actually vacated portion of the township road that's south of the airport. We finally got ahold of the documents from the township where they did take an action in 2014 to officially vacate that, that portion of Two Fortyth Street that's, that runs from the west side of the airport on that township road to County Highway Seven on the east side of the airport, down on the bottom. So, right, we're going to sit down and talk about that. I don't know if the ES Fish and Wildlife knew that was vacated. But they, they did have a public hearing and they did publish it in the paper and they did take an action at the Darnan Township Board to vacate that road. It's, if you go look there now, you can barely see part of it because there's a farm field on either side of the tire tracks for that little section of the road. So we'll, we'll have a meeting to talk about what's going to happen moving forward with that. Looking at grass and weeds, we got some new playground equipment that's going to be put in. And we'll also be looking at kind of the normal things now that spring kind of came and things started clearing up a little bit. So we'll look at junk and debris and vehicles and those kind of things. And like I said, actually Marshall wasn't here, but the delegation of Germans is coming back to Morris. They're actually touring the coal-fired power plant in Fergus Falls that's going to be closing. And then they're going to come back here and they're going to go to Me Mexico for dinner. So everybody's invited to go over there if you want to get together and get a chance to see them again and renew friendships. We'll do that afterwards. You're invited to come and keep an eye on the council if you want. And that's pretty much it.
Any questions on the city manager report?
I just one quick question, Lee. With regards to the ordinance on long-term, short-term, a lot of them parked for like RVs, things like that on the street, what is the actual ordinance? Is it forty-eight hours?
Twenty-four is, twenty-four hours.
Twenty-four.
But, you know, in order for them to identify that somebody's been parked over twenty-four hours, they'd probably have to be given notice, you know, because they, they wouldn't have any way of knowing other than, you know, coming around and marking vehicles or whatever. But there are several campers that tend to set up on the street. You know, you'll see a corridor, a water hose going over to the camper. And really that's not the place, you know, if you're cleaning a camper or, you know, trying to check it out before you haul it somewhere, that's one thing. But if you're setting up, I know, I think it was two years ago, we had a camper that was set up over on, I think it was Park Avenue, and they actually pushed out their push-outs?
Slide-out.
Slide-outs? So, so they, it was set up to... Yeah, and that's, you know, once you start doing that, you know, that's, that's pretty obvious that... I don't know if they had guests or what it was, but you really, you really shouldn't be using them on the streets.
Oh, yeah, it's a public safety issue. I mean, a lot of our streets aren't wide that way anyway to begin with. And then you've got campers and whatnot parked in the street. Probably a lot of problems. Okay, good, thank you. I was wondering what the actual ordinance was. Somebody asked me, I was thinking twenty-four, forty-eight dollars.
I see we finally got our thistles addressed on the Green River, but there's still some in there that are coming pretty strongly. So hopefully they stay on top of that and don't let it get carried away as far as it was this time because it was really thick with thistles that were two, two and a half foot tall. I know it's tough to stay ahead of it, but if we can get that grass to grow into there. I talked to Matt Solomon's house and said that we either need to spray them or trim them. But I know it's finicky what we can all do, but hopefully they stay on top of that. If we're going to expect our citizens to stay on top of the weeds, we should have our weeds under control.
Have they seeded that?
Yeah.
They seeded it last year.
They did?
Yes.
Let's get her up.
Well, there's, I mean, if you look at, you know, wild flowers and birdgrass and stuff like that, it really looks unruly. I mean, that's the way it looks. But, you know, the one, I think the one nice part is that it does look like now Green River is being protected pretty well with all the vegetation that's down by the riverbank. Although there are some major washouts again around some of the bends. But once the dog would start getting roots down and everything, that should be better. But, and they are going to mow a strip and it is possible to come in and mow some of that. So they talked about doing that.
Good. Anything else on the city manager report or anything else to bring before the council? Good. Meeting adjourned.